Post it. All right, that's.
But let me see something. Okay.
But I don't know how to do co-hosting.
Does it give you the option for a co-host or no?
No, it just lets me only change. I think, yeah, maybe I have, it's too basic, maybe.
Maybe, maybe make me the host for a second. Let me see if I could do the shared screening and then I'll put you back as a host. Let me see if we can do it.
Okay. Do you want to change?
Okay, let me see if I can do it. Hang on. Okay. So hopefully now that's going to work out. Now you, now you make me, I'm going to make you the host and see if that worked out. Okay, let me see. Yep, I can share the screen.
Okay, good. Okay, good.
So it looks like this is all good.
Oh, yes, fantastic. Well, we had the drive-through yesterday because Jason, you know, right before Thanksgiving wasn't able to make it. They forgot. So, which was fine. So we had the two locations. It should be nice.
Let me just make sure the video.
Miami-Dade County is dealing with the challenges of traffic and mobility. These are issues that.
That's what we do. So now I'm gonna stop sharing and then when it's my turn, I'll share the screen. Yeah, because now if you have other people presenting, they could share their screen too. We did that already. We took care of that.
Okay, good. All right, good, good. Good. All right, let me set up this art thing on this side of the room because.
And I'll be back. I'm going to put myself on mute.
Well, if I put myself on mute, it won't mute everybody, will it? It's just me.
It will only mute yourself, you.
Yeah, okay, good. I'll put me on mute.
Hello.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. How are you?
Fine, thank you. Fine, fine. We're, um, you know, it's Thursday night and you think of all these things, other things that are happening today.
It's, it's okay. I mean, listen, I, I think, you know, we'll, we'll try to hopefully get a little bit of input, but I think we have a good understanding on how it should work. I just want to know more or less where people need to get, need to go, you know?
That's right.
The good thing is though is, you know, when we take them down to the Bright Line station, you know, it's centrally located in downtown and from there to get to their, you know, final destination, they can either jump on the Metro Rail to get into Brickell or whatever they need to go. Or if they're going to downtown, they can just request a Freebie for free. It will take them door to door right there.
Oh, that's good.
Yes, we'll have an easy connection right from El Portal into downtown and then to where they need to go. So it'll be really good.
Oh, that's good. I didn't know about, so once it gets to Bright Line, then they can request a Freebie and go like a, almost like Uber.
Yep.
That's, that's great.
And there's a, there's also the Metro Mover there. There's a Metro Mover, the Metro Rail and, and also the City of Miami Trolley and the Freebie. So there's, there's multiple connections that they can make there. And the Tri-Rail is going to be coming into downtown as well to that Bright Line station.
Good.
So it's a big hub.
That's great. When is the Tri-Rail coming there?
That's, it was supposed to be there a long time ago, but no, there's a lot of delays.
There's a lot of negotiations going on between, you know, the, the rail companies, but it's, it's, it's finally, I think it's, it's, it's getting closer.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll be ready for when it starts. Um, one other good thing is that we're recording this, so we can put this on our website and people can just go right to it and, you know, see it. So this, even if, you know, we don't have a full house tonight, we still have it recorded and this information, you know, people can just look at it at their leisure.
Perfect.
That's a good thing. Yeah, and, and, um, we got three. Let me see if I've got any handles.
Why would you lock on your door and you come out? You know what? You can't only just talk to people. That's wrong. You can't do all kinds of people. It really invades people's privacy. If they show you that. Well, do you want to open? No. Who friends? Oh, sisters.
I actually created a small graphic if you want me to share it.
Yeah, are you able to share on your screen?
I can share it from my here.
Oh, yeah. Okay, good. Very nice. Oh, you got peacock feathers on it and everything.
Everything.
Oh, wow. Well, that's nice. That's good. Oh, here we are. Councilperson, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Urbom. This is Jason Spiegel and Lisa Colemanars. Um, our Vice Mayor Anders Urbom has just joined us.
Very nice to meet you, Vice Mayor.
Nice to meet you. Good evening.
You're on mute, Vice Mayor Urbom. Maybe he couldn't hear us. Maybe he can't, okay.
All right, I think I'm here. Good evening. Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
Good evening. We're gonna give everyone a little bit of time. It's 6:31. I'll try to hang on till about 6:35, but I know everyone has things to do and we, we have a little bit of information we want to share, but we are recording this town hall as well. So if residents later have an opportunity, they can always go back and look at it. We'll post it on the website. So they can, you know, see what the presentation was all about and if they have questions, then they can just reach out to, to me. And, you know, we'll get answers to them. Just a moment more. Okay. All right. We're gonna go ahead and get started just because I know time is, is very precious in the evening hours, especially in this month of December. And I just got a message from Mayor Nickerson who said he's trying to get on, but just go ahead. He'll jump in when he can. But I do want us to have enough time to talk about all the valuable information related to our circulator project. This is a pilot program that is being funded by funds that we've gotten from the Miami-Dade County TPO and the state of Florida. Florida Department of Transportation is providing matching funds to assist us, the Village of El Portal, in kind of eliminating some of our footprints in our, in our efforts to be more sustainable and to provide less carbon emissions on the roads and do some ride sharing. And this is a circulator. Like a little bus or shuttle that will allow us to go to and from downtown our residents for free. And this is a community workshop that allows our community to ask any questions or weigh in on the circulator stops and the parking in the Village of El Portal. The circulator is slated to take residents of the village to downtown Miami to the Bright Line Station where there are a host of other transportation options available to them. To get to and from work and to get children where they need to be as well. And we are expecting to start our pilot program at the beginning of the year. So this is our first community town hall. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to, you know, reach out to me after the meeting or during. We'll, we'll take questions, but I do want to introduce two of our special guests and when our, I see our mayor, Mayor Nickerson was able to join us. We also have Mayor, Vice Mayor Anders Urbom with us this evening as well. And I'm sure they will ask any questions that their constituents have forwarded to them throughout this presentation as well. So I want to introduce Maria Lisa Colemanars. She's with the TPO. She's the Program Development Manager for the Miami-Dade Transportation Planning Organization. And we also have Jason Spiegel, who is with Freebie, B-Free Miami. He's provide, he's the service provider for the shuttle. And as you all see through the shared screen, that's the, a prototype of the shuttle service that Freebie will be operating in the Village of El Portal. So before we get started with that, I would like Lisa Colemanars to kind of talk about quickly how we got here and what our, what our plans are. So if you will, Lisa, please unmute and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Excellent. And thank you very much for having us here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and also to all attendees here today. We do have a very brief presentation that we can share with you, which is similar to what we had provided as well at the Village Council. Just to share very briefly, as you know, we have a SMART plan, which is a strategic Miami area rapid transit plan, which our Miami-Dade TPO Governing Board has approved and adopted and endorsed since 2016. However, this is an expansion of mass transit that is in our long range and short range planning documents here in Miami-Dade County. And the, the SMART demonstration program was launched in June 21st of 2018 to advance elements of the SMART plan and to advance those first last mile connections so that all of the residents of Miami-Dade County had the opportunity to connect to these six corridors that are, that are prioritized throughout Miami-Dade County. And this is a multi-year effort. So additionally to this, one of the efforts that was taken by the Citizens Independent Transportation Agency was to allow that CITT funds be able to be used to match SMART demonstration products. So this is very important because we, the way that we're working at the Miami-Dade TPO is that we're working with our municipal partners. We're working with the county to include the municipal needs that we have to connect to the SMART plan. And we are obtaining different, different funds, be it from the state, be it from the feds, and we are using these local CITT funds, your funds, to match the requirements from the state to be able, to enable us to be able to make use of these funds and maximize to make it more efficient for the residents. So we started our SMART demonstration program in 2018, as I mentioned, and between 2018 and 2019, we already, in, in 2020, we have already advanced 37 projects in Miami-Dade County. That's why you see a very, very busy map. So we are already in our third phase. Of those, we already have, between the projects that we already have, our board has approved in 2018 and 2019. We already have around half of those that have already been advancing and are operating and is serviced or very quickly to be started in the next month or so. And we have a combination of projects that include fixed routes or on-demand services or something that could be a hybrid like we have with, with what, what the village is trying to accomplish here, which is in the, in the peak hours, connecting your residents to the downtown areas, to the employment centers, and during off-peak air hours, providing those connections within the town, within the village, that could take your residents to medical appointments, to Publix, to, to the pharmacy, to where they need to go. So that will be maximize the use of these on-demand services. So we want to make sure that we partner with our providers like, like Jason, like Freebie, and that we see the needs of your residents and that we maximize these uses. So for El Portal, which is, which we have an on-demand responsive service, which will also serve with, with fixed routes that accommodate your residents in the peak hours to the downtown area. We have a first last mile service to the, to the northeast corridor, which is one of our six SMART demonstration corridors. And it's a dynamically routed locations to bring people to the Village Hall, to other locations that you had mentioned to us, Horus Man, any other locations that your residents might want to go to, and then go to downtown locations, may it be the Bright Line, maybe have another couple of intermittent stops, maybe at the Omni Metro Rail Station and so forth. So we, we had funded it in service development in fiscal year 2021, and right now we are working with the state to continue advancing the, the project and, and starting the service as very soon. So I just want to show a small video.
All right, let me, let me stop sharing the screen so that you can do that.
One of the important roles that the TPO has is to form transportation policies and create partnerships that help satisfy our transportation goals. Something we've done that's very interesting is create demonstration projects around our SMART Plan.
Demonstration projects are focused on increasing the first-and-last-mile access to existing and future SMART Plan transit stations.
How you get to major transit, and once you're on and off, how you get to where you need to go.
So whether you live in the south end of the county, north end, west or east, there are demonstration projects currently going on right now that improve mobility and at the same time, show our state and federal partners not only a commitment, but also possible solutions to the issues that we have at hand.
That's how you move transit forward together, connecting people, places, and things.
Thank you very much. And we want to thank you for stepping up and being a part of our demonstration program. And now I'm gonna turn it back to Ms. Alu. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. And I am gonna be happy to see El Portel in the next video, showing that we are participants. So yes, we talked about a route or a schedule that would be Monday through Friday. We're looking at 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM in the mornings. And then in the afternoons, 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So those are peak hours that could be most helpful in getting people to and from their, you know, downtown offices or school or what have you, and medical appointments and what have you. And we're also looking at two locations. I was able to meet with Jason Spiegel yesterday morning to kind of map out the internal route of, you know, just the pickup. And then I'm gonna let him actually talk a little bit about that. But I'm gonna actually now turn it over to Jason so he can talk about what the vehicle will look like and then the route that we're gonna pursue for this pilot program. So Jason, take it away.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. So welcome to the Freebie El Portel Express. And, you know, as they mentioned, you know, there's a bunch of goals of this program. But essentially, the biggest goal is to really help connect you, the residents, to where you need to go without ever having to take out your personal vehicle. And this type of transportation service provides that type of connection. And the vehicles that we're gonna be using for this are 100% electric. So again, it's all about sustainability. It's all about reducing carbon footprint. And it's all about providing that connectivity, again, without having to take out your car, without having to spend money, and be able to be reliable and convenient all at the same time. So the vehicle itself, like I said, it's 100% electric. It holds nine passengers plus a wheelchair lift. It's fully air-conditioned, has TV screens on there to play loop commercials that the village will be able to promote. We'll have a bike rack that will be equipped on the vehicle so that if you need to get into downtown and you just want to jump on your bike from there to get to where you need to go, you'll be able to have that opportunity. And as they mentioned, the tentative schedule is to start a Monday through Friday service during the peak hours in the morning and the afternoon. So 7:00 to 10:00 AM in the morning and 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM in the afternoon. How the service would work is right at 7:00 AM, the vehicle would go along the route, which would start right at Village Hall there. So that would be the first pickup point. People can walk there, bike there. You know, there's a few parking spaces if you needed to drive there. But that is your location where you'd be able to hop on the Freebie and to get to downtown or to wherever you need to go. From there, we're gonna shoot down, right down 87th. And the second location, you know, again, very central to the, I guess, the west side of El Portel, would be right at the beginning of the El Portel Nature Trail, right at the Horace Mann School there. So those are the two stops that we're looking at within the village to be able to pick you up. And again, service would start at 7:00. So right at 7:00 would be right at Village Hall. And then about 5, 7 minutes later, we'd be right down to El Portel Nature Trail and then shooting straight down to the downtown Miami Central Station, Bright Line Station. Today, you know, part of the goal was to hear from you, the residents, to see where you needed to go and how we can get you there. If there's stops along the route that, you know, are, you know, I guess, places that you need to go, your work, school, or whatever name may be, we want to hear from you so that we can design the specific route that is custom to you, the residents. And again, this will be tracked through the Ride Freebie app. So you'll be able to download the app. You'll be able to track the vehicle in real time. So it'll be very reliable. You know how long it's gonna take to get to wherever you're at and wherever you need to go. So again, it's gonna be a very convenient service, a reliable service, a free service. And it's gonna be doing great things for the community there. The end stop most likely will be right at the Miami Central Bright Line Station. And from there, you know, you can jump on another Freebie and get driven door-to-door to your final destination. You can jump on the trolley. You can jump on the Metro Mover, on the Metro Rail, depending on where you need to go. But you'll have a multitudine of options to be able to, again, get that last mile once you get into the downtown area. And then again, you know, same thing, coming back at the end of the day, we'll be doing round trips back from Miami Central Station, kind of the opposite way, going back up towards El Portel. And, you know, if there's stops along the way where we need to pick additional people up, we will. And then ending up at the El Portel Nature Trail and the Village Hall. Depending on how many stops we are doing, it will be between two and three trips during each of those service hours. So there'll be one at 7:00 AM, 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM, and then 3:00 PM, 4:00 PM, 5:00 PM. Or again, if there's a multitudine of stops and there's a lot of different, you know, I guess, stops along the way, it might be only two trips in the morning and two in the afternoon. But again, that will all be determined once we figure out where you guys need to go and once we fully design the route. But essentially, in a nutshell, that's how it's gonna work.
I have a question. I'm sorry. I have a question, Jason. How long does it take to get from that last stop, which is the Nature Trail, to the Bright Line Station? If you're taking North Miami Avenue, how long?
We like to, you know, if we're not stopping and there's no traffic, you know, it's between 20 and 30 minutes. We like to say 30 minutes, you know, to give us a little bit of extra time there. Now, if we have to stop along the way at other stops, if people need to get out at Omni or if we designed that within the route, then that's going to increase. And that would make it so that, you know, we'd probably only be able to do two instead of three during each of those service hours.
And will there be a designated spot at the Bright Line Station in downtown? So people like, so at 3:00 or 4:00, when I need to get back home, I'll know where that?
Yep. There'll be a designated stop there, just like there is within the village.
Okay. Okay. And I just think it's also important to note, this is a 100% electric vehicle, zero emissions. And Freebie will be putting a charging station at the Village Hall in the most or least intrusive place at the parking lot next to the top lot. But it's a spot that's not even really paved, but it's enough space for the charging station to go there so as to maximize our opportunity with the parking. We do have two handicap parking spots on that side as well and some open spots. So that, you know, we're utilizing the best of our abilities, the parking for our residents. And we're actually working on some other matters that hopefully can take our employee parking to the other side of the Village Hall and away from that area so that we can offer those spots to our residents. Does anyone have any questions, Mayor Nickerson or Vice Mayor Erbom? If you have anything you'd like to ask or add to about this pilot program, please feel free.
Sure, I've got several questions. If that's right, Mayor Nickerson? Okay. How are you doing, guys? Thank you for bringing the presentation. I've got a series of questions here. So I guess I had a similar question to what Ms. Alu was asking in terms of travel time from the north end up here, you know, of the route, from the Nature Trail down to Government Center. I kind of got some of my questions answered regarding transportation from government. I'm sorry, I keep saying Government Center, but we're talking the Bright Line Central Station in Miami, right? Okay, that Metro Mover, that exists already, that connection?
Yes.
Okay. That's awesome. All right. I think it's a very positive thing that we have the two stops in El Portel. How, what kind of signage are we talking about? What kind of stop does it look like? What kind of, when someone's waiting for the arrival of the vehicle, what is their experience at that point?
In terms of like what they're waiting under or?
I love it. Yes, yes. So what they're waiting, what they're waiting under? What kind of signage are they looking at? And what type of communication are we talking about in terms of giving them an expectation of where they're going? And then, obviously, how they would return to where they're at?
Yeah, so I guess in terms of the signage first, you know, we're gonna put in, I guess, you know, just typical signage that will have, you know, this is the Freebie stop. It will probably have the times that, you know, it will be getting picked up and dropped off there, similar to what we have actually down in Palmetto Bay. And then from there, you'll also be able to pull up the Freebie app and track that vehicle live. So if you're waiting at stop two, you'll see that it's moving from stop one to stop two. And if you're down at a Bright Line Station, you'll be able to track exactly where it's at and where it's going. So it'll be very convenient.
I don't imagine they'd have the ability to know how many passengers are already in the van. That probably wouldn't be.
Not at the moment. I mean, if it's, that's something that, you know, over time, that it becomes rarely popular, we can probably add that to it.
Well, okay, so my next question is actually, how many vehicles will you have? Let's say we keep it simple. These two stops up here, the one stop at Bright Line. So we're talking three total, right, at the extremities of the route. How many vehicles do you see yourself in that, the most basic of scenarios in need of?
Sure. So the budget was only allowed for one vehicle. So this is gonna be one van that will, you know, go down from stop one to stop two, straight down to Bright Line and back.
Okay. So years ago, living in North Beach, I had a mind to see what it might take to start a van service that just went from North Beach to South Beach. At the time, I was working in South Beach and living in North Beach. And it was such a simple little ride, the difficulty was parking at the other end, right? And then parking when I got home again tonight, right? And so I was sitting there thinking, I could charge a dollar a ride and put four vans on our route and kill it, right? So, you know, by the time, I was very young at the time. And so even just looking into insurance for something like that kind of stopped me in my tracks. But I think you're gonna be surprised at the ridership that you have as soon as word kind of gets out that this is going on. I think this is an incredibly valuable and really needed service. Continuing on, so now understanding logistics of, you know, one vehicle for this budget, for this pilot program, my recommendation, at least at this point, would be to not add any stops at all whatsoever. Let this see what it does, and then, you know, we can expand upon it, you know. And so if this is the model to look and see how it goes, then I would suggest not messing with this too much, especially if there's one vehicle. Then you've got the number of railroad crossings, for example. The hours of the day we're talking about are rush hour. So I think if we limited the number of stops to just these two up here and the one down there, I think we'd be surprised at how many people from the surrounding area really do come to try and use the service. And then additionally, I think that not having stops in between would free your organization up to be able to utilize the most efficient route that you find to get down there. So it doesn't have to, you know, path of least resistance is how electricity moves, right? Water, everything else. And so going a straight line A to B down East Second Avenue, for example, I think all of us know is not, sure, you'd be on East Second Avenue, but then you jump over to Miami, and then you might be back over East Second again. So I think limiting those number of stops would free your organization up to really find, you know, a route that you wouldn't have to be committed to because of other stops. All right. And then in that, so, oh, the duration of the pilot status, that was one of my big questions. How long are we talking about in terms of this budget, this program, as it's presented tonight?
No, it was my understanding, this was for a year. I know that Miami Shores had the same pilot that was to be a year, but they discontinued. This is just before the pandemic, or actually, it was about six months before the pandemic. But I think that was a different situation. I think we're now in a space where it would do a lot better. So I am told it's for 12 months. And prior to that, we can assess, you know, or stop it after a time suspended until, you know, perhaps the pandemic subsides or things get a little bit, are opened up more. Lisa, do you have?
And then that, for the demonstration program and the types of funds that we're using with the state, you could request funds up to three years for these types of pilot programs. So if the city is happy, the village is happy of El Portel with this specific service, and you could tweak it, you know, as you see how it's working out, and you want to request additional funding for future years, we can work with you and do that. So you can request up to three years of funding.
Okay. And then just please remind me, which other municipalities are you operating in currently?
We operate in Coral Gables, South Miami, Coconut Grove, Pine Crest, Palmetto Bay, North Bay Village, Doral, Miami Lakes, Miami Beach.
Okay. So you've got, so you've got a system for maintenance, for example, you've got?
We're a Miami-based company, so our entire resources and operations are here locally.
Okay. And all right. So you've got long-term relationships with vendors and things like that as well, too. All right. Let's see. I know I have a couple more questions. Give me just five seconds and I'll think of them.
No problem. Take your time.
Oh, in terms of, okay, so in terms of the signage there, you're saying there's the app. What would be already essentially coming from your end in terms of community messaging? And then what is it that the village needs to be doing in terms of its messaging to get the word out that this service is available?
Sure. I mean, it's a great question. And, you know, one of the great things that we take care of is that we have an entire marketing staff in-house here. So our expertise is in getting the word out about these types of programs, you know, from the press releases, to mailers, to just holding types of workshops. I mean, we go above and beyond to make sure everybody knows about the service, is familiar with it, is educated on it, and, you know, hopefully uses it. Because when people start using the service, like we've seen in every other municipality, it only grows extraordinarily so fast.
Right, right. And then, you know, for the sake of keeping it simple, especially at the start, understanding that if it does go well, then you will expand. Then I, you know, I guess I feel very strongly about just keeping these two pickup points and then the one down. I think this is, I think that's great. I think if we message correctly, that we'll get a good response. You know, it might even be a good thing where we start to get complaints that, you know, it's full all the time, right? Then we know we're on the right track. So, you know, I believe inconsistency is king. So as long as we're talking about a product that's reliable and consistent, as long as we're talking about the service itself that's reliable and consistent, then I think this would be something that honestly could help El Portel become like an anchor point for multiple points in the general area here. So and I think at the Nature Trail is a wonderful spot to stand and wait for a ride. So I'm excited about the west side stop there. I think that's all I have for now. I'll interrupt you guys if I have something else here in a minute.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. A question, Jason. So drivers, will we have the same driver all the time? Or is it gonna be somebody different every day?
I mean, based on the hours, it's less than 40 hours. So it would most likely be the same driver every single day. The driver, I mean, I didn't really get to go much into it, but they actually are a community ambassador. So they'll be very, they'll be trained on everything within El Portel messaging. And if there's any public service announcements that you guys want them to, you know, speak with, with the residents, there's TV screens in there so you guys can have looping commercials on, you know, if you have an event going on, or again, messaging. But yeah, the drivers are a huge, huge part of the program. They really make it very successful.
And will the shuttle be outfitted with any like charging? You know, sometimes people, you know, if they've got 30 minutes, they're on their smartphones or what have you. Maybe they, would they be able to charge their?
Oh, you're saying they're charged their phone on the way down?
Yes.
It's something that potentially could be added. You know, for us, the experience is everything, you know. So if there's a way for us to add in some, you know, some portable chargers there, we'll find a way to do it.
Well, I'm sure we'll ramp up as we see demand. Vice Mayor Erbom?
Yeah, we have a 12-volt charger right in the back of the vehicle. I know at least for one, but we- Twelve volt charger right in the back of the vehicle. I know at least for one, but we can see if we can uh make it for every row there.
Right, okay. I I saw you had your hand uh vice mayor.
Yeah, I thought of about two or three more questions here.
Go ahead.
Let's see. One was the charging station that we're talking about. Is that going to be necessary to be installed before you're able to begin operating?
Yes.
Okay, um and then um I imagine uh we've had discussions is it would not be El Portel solely in charge of the uh inspection and permitting of that installation, I imagine.
We take care of that.
Okay, all right. And because of the number of municipalities you operate in already, you have done several of these already? Installations of a charging station?
Yes, in every municipality, we've done these uh.
Will will the installation of a charging station in that spot that we're eking out for it? Is there enough uh? I'm not familiar with the permitting required for a charging station. I a couple of years ago, I was talking to a few people in the Keys, for example. They were talking about what it would take to put charging stations in in front of like a couple hotels, things like this. And um and so I'm not, I'm just not familiar enough with it. But uh are in your experience, are you confident that the surrounding area around that spot will in fact facilitate uh a successful installation? Or do you see any issues at all with the location we've selected?
No, no, I don't mean, we went, we went and put eyes on it yesterday and it's actually right next to it, right by the electrical.
Okay.
Super simple.
Okay, um and then uh regarding the uh television uh ad potential within the vehicle. Are these ads that local businesses would be able to purchase from you? Or are you saying that we have uh creative control over what is played on those TVs?
Yeah, you guys can put every one of those TVs.
Okay, so for that, I would my my humble opinion would be to do something that would be silent, image only. Noise can become outrageous.
Yeah, we don't have sound.
Perfect. Okay, all right. I was a little bit worried we'd have Jerry Springer screaming at people on the way. Okay, all right. Very good. Um uh okay, that uh that really sounds that sounds fantastic because then, you know, that's a perk that the village we have a hard time competing with our larger neighbors, right? And so that would be the perk the village has to say, hey, if you have a business within El Portel, you also get, you know, some screen time on on local public transportation, which which is certainly valuable. So um, okay, I think that's a that's a huge bonus that we would have creative control over that. So I think those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um I don't know if we still have the uh Mayor Nickerson with us. Do you have any questions, Mayor Nickerson?
Hi, how you guys doing? First of all, yes, I do. Thank you very much, Madam Manager. I appreciate it. Um, thank you very much, uh Ms. Comaneras. I appreciate seeing you here. And Mrs. Spiegel, I appreciate you guys being here um also. So as always, uh the Vice Mayor did a wonderful job with these questions because there were a few that uh that I had also. But I did have some um some more just for clarification purposes. As far as the the uh the El Portel uh well, as far as the TV screens and what we could put on the TV screens. So there so it's 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 no cost to.
It's a turnkey program. Every, you know, the the cost of the program includes everything.
Okay, perfect. And I'll and I'll probably bring this up uh Vice Mayor will probably bring this up. I'll put this on uh you know, on maybe this December or or January agenda, but I think it should just go to um to the council and we vote, you know, you know, what should be on there. So it's not just like you know, we don't want to feel like one person is trying to make all decisions or there's like, you know, we just say, hey, you guys. You know, this local business has come, is it okay? And we put this and we can just vote for that, I guess, the council means a thing like that. Besides that, um how often can we can we change those screens? Is it just giving you new information? Mr. Speaker, if we change it there, that's perfect because then we could always keep it uh uh Vice Mayor, we could always keep it updated with community events. You know, the 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 um meetings tonight, the meetings tomorrow, whatever it is, we can always keep that updated with things like that, community um committee meetings and things like that. And um and it's free, so that'd be good. And we'll pass it uh through the council when we decide on doing uh putting things on. I think it's perfect what the Vice Mayor said as far as the uh three stops, the two village, the village hall, the nature trail and the bright line uh central station, you know. I take uh I take public transportation all the time. I'm like, I I first of all, I just love to um I love to like just be in the midst of the city life for like, you know, a lot of times, you know. I like to see different people. I like to pound the pavement with my feet. You know, when you get downtown on a workday and things like that, when everything's open and bustling, you kind of get a sense. It's a part of Miami that if you don't ride um down there and in like, you know, public transportation, you just don't, you don't see that part of Miami. And we get down there, especially when you when you go to like the the Metro Mover or Metro Rail stops, like a government center and things like that, and you're like, man, like look at all this going on, like with the court systems and you see lawyers running around and it's it's just, it's really wild. So it's a part of Miami you really don't see um unless you like really experience that. So I do um I I do take that. And so I do love that the Bright Line Central Station um is that stop. I agree with the Vice Mayor wholeheartedly. That should be the the only outside stop, at least to begin with. Um because from the bright line, you do have that Metro Mover connection. And once you get on that Metro Mover connection, it takes you everywhere. Click, click, um, Mr. Speaker, you were saying earlier, you mentioned like the Omni, for example, you know. We don't need to have a stop at the Omni because the Metro Mover stops right there at the Omni and it avoids all traffic because you're up in the air. Right? So you'll probably even get there quicker, you know, especially during rush hour and things like that. So uh so definitely we those three stops are perfect. Um this is more for the village manager when she gets back, I'll save that one. Um the next question, to be back in a second. I like that the freebie app shows you exactly where the.
My daughter's on another event, so I'm trying to help.
It's all good, Madam Manager. It's all good. I hope she's doing good. Um, I think that we should consider, and this is something that, you know, it's not a public meeting, myself and the Vice Mayor can't really discuss it right now, but you know, this is a public event, I'll put it out there. Um but Madam Manager, I think that we should consider putting uh some type of tent at the nature trail. Because it is Miami, it's going to rain, you guys, you know, this 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 does start at the beginning of the year. Um when it when it will, it won't be rainy, right? Because you you know, we'll still have that this good weather that we had like today. We'll still have that, you know, January, a little bit February, but then, you know, those showers will start to come. And uh I just don't want our residents at the nature trail being caught in the rain, waiting for the uh the van service. At the village hall, and that is not necessary, they can all get up under like where the entrance of the village hall door is. You have that overhang, people can kind of get up under there. Um but for the nature trail, we will need like a white tent. Doesn't have to be a huge white tent, which is something that can fit like, you know, at least like six, seven people or something like that. Um so that if it does rain, we need people to stand under there.
I think that's fine. And that's appropriate to do some kind of canopy would be very nice here.
Yeah, something like that, something nice. Um so just wanted to clear things up as far as uh for the pilot program, at least that one year of the pilot program. Want to clear things up for the record, there is no cost to the residents, correct?
That is correct.
That's that's correct. Madam Manager, you want to you want to say that also verify?
That is correct. There is no fee to the to the resident.
We don't want any any rumor. On the record, there's no cost to the residents.
Right, no fee.
No fee.
Free of charge to El Portel residents.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, Madam Manager. Um one thing that, oh, I will let me before I even get to that, let me just say this. Uh I think also uh Vice Mayor, I love your question about how to get the word out there. And remember that um in January, we're gonna have the newsletter with the cops. Remember, we we talked about with all the cops in it for that first newsletter. And uh I mean, we can, you know, we can hopefully put the a freebie like kind of what we see on the screen right now, give it a whole page. You know, with the the schedules there and things, we can just add some or some other uh wording to it. You know, here in El Portel, real nice and real, you know, real big and things like that. And this would be good as far as a a full page uh color uh in the newsletter. So we can do that. I love that the driver's gonna be the same. He'll be community ambassador, even if he's not the same, you know. Even if it's two or three drivers, they all know about the community. That's that's great. Um the and this, I and let me just say, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not coming down on the program or I'm not, I'm not questioning anything. I love it. I think it's great. Uh the only thing that we may have to worry about. And Vice Vice Mayor uh made me think about this when he asked about um how many vans. Which is free for the village, so we we don't have a choice, right? I mean, we can't, if it's free, you can't ask for like, you know, I'm saying it's too much, but but my my only concern though is COVID nineteen. Because people, especially in El Portel, you guys, we do have um an elderly population. And therefore people may be concerned about social distancing. And you know, we're talking about a van with nine seats. And if people aren't, people just may not want to feel comfortable sitting next to somebody don't know through this COVID nineteen social distancing, especially if it starts to get worse as it has been getting worse. And if it starts to get really bad, um people will be scared. I I'm just, I fear there may be complaints of you guys only have one van, you know, it's packed, there's COVID nineteen, that's not responsible for the village to do that and things like that. Um like I said, it might be something we can't help because, like I said, it's free to the village. So, you know, beggars can't be choosers, but to only have one van through social distancing, you may have people that's that, once that van gets kind of full, that's like, you know what? I'm not comfortable with the with the um van being full um with that. So if we did have a, you know, at least another van or something like that, it would, you know, kind of be able to spread things out. If we could have another van that was, you know, a few minutes behind the first van or something like that. So whereas like, oh, it's too full. Okay, well, there's the second van is on his way. Um it'd be here in, you know, five, eight minutes or something like that. But that's not only concern, but everything else, uh those were my questions.
No, it's it's a valid. Um we're, you know, obviously we're experiencing that in all of our municipalities right now. Um and when we talk about that the the vehicle seats nine, right now, we don't allow more than five on those vans in the community. So it's it's just, it's the life we live right now. It's unfortunate, but um it is what it is. And you know, again, we can we can do the same thing where we would, you know, block off seats, you know, where people would not be sitting next to each other. But again, that would limit the amount of passengers per trip going down. Um or, you know, we we delay the start of it to when COVID is getting a little bit better and, you know, we feel a little bit safer on being in play, able to put nine people in a van together. But I do want to, I I I wish we can show you the van in person because it's they're they're huge. I mean, you can stand up inside. If you're six foot four, you're not even, your your head's not near the ceiling. They're they're big vans, they're very ventilated. Um so it's not, it's not a small little shuttle that, you know, you might think. These are the high ceiling ones. Um but again, we'll we'll work together to figure out what the best route is when it comes to COVID and safety. Um our drivers sanitize the vehicles before every trip, after every trip. Um so safety is our is always our number one priority.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I I do appreciate that. Um and 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 knowing that, you know, during COVID, you guys only allow five. You know, it's good, like I said, but you know, if this thing does get popular the way that I I agree with the Vice Mayor, it may just get popular. Um, yeah, it might fill up really fast. That's my only concern. It might just flow really fast. It might be a lot of people waiting. Um and so we'll see how that goes. My last question uh that I just thought about, and this may be something that we may not know right now, but um uh Ms. Comaneras, this is for you more. So after the after the one year pilot and Mr. Speaker, you may know, yeah, I'm sure you know about this also, but after the one year pilot program is expired, what is the, what have you guys seen with the other municipalities as far as like, what is the yearly cost to keep something like this going? Like, what what would that be?
So it really depends on a lot of different factors. But I'll tell you this, I mean, every single pilot program that has been started has been continued because of how successful it is. And most of them have grown with more vehicles. Um it's a, it's, you know, transportation is super important. Transportation in Miami is very important because it's a very car centric culture. And you know, the service that we provide, not only in El Portel, but across Miami Dade County is you know, an on demand, door to door service that people buy into. And people that don't typically ride transit ride freebie because the convenience, the experience and the connectivity that they get without even having to take out their personal vehicle. Um so again, I mean, after year one, you know, we'll evaluate everything. I mean, before year one, I mean, everything we do is also data driven. We collect every little piece of data. You guys will have a dashboard to be able to monitor the ridership. You know, the times people are getting picked up, where they're getting picked up the most. Um you'll be, you'll have all that data. So, you know, after three months, six months, we'll sit together, we'll look at it and we'll say, what can we do to make this program better? Um what does this program look like after year one? Um and then there's many routes that we can go.
Do we, I mean, do is Madam Manager or um do we have an idea of how much typically we're talking about, I mean, what what, I mean, we had what Coral Gables, South Miami, what North Bay Village, Coconut Grove? Like, do we have any idea of how much per year they started to pay? I mean, I understand that, you know, we will revisit this after, you know, three months, six months. I'm sorry about that. I'm I'm a nerd and a dork and I'm a wonk. And I love and OCD, right? So and 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 Madam and the manager and uh and and the Vice uh Mayor will tell you that I'm I I I went to plan things way in advance. So so um.
I I can tell you this, uh Mayor Nickerson, that, you know, uh it's not free, you know, you said it's free to the, it's free to our residents, but we are paying our portion of this um for this service through our um CITT.
Yeah, I understood that's why, that's why I wanted to make the the um the distinctiveness of residence versus, I want to say it's free to the residents. That's why I want to make that make that known. I just want to get, I just want to see, if we don't have it tonight, it's okay. I just want to see if we have any type of idea. So just budget wise, I can start to have that in my mind of, okay, if this starts to look good, you know. That may be on this back end this year might pass, you know, I I want to have that in my mind. So I have that cost in my mind. Um.
For during year one, that's being funded through CITT and, you know, matched through FDOT is costing a total of a hundred and fourteen thousand total, all in.
All right, that helps me out. Thank you. That's uh that's it for me as far as questions. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, and and Mr. Mayor, um we will be working with with you, with you and your staff in the spring because that's when we will start our phase four of the demonstration projects around the April, May time period. That's when we will be putting together a list of program priorities to request additional funding um to the state and to the to our federal partners. And that's when, that's the time when we put together our program next year. So we, it will be, it will come very quick and we'll be working uh back together on these requests.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think I've got just two more questions, if that's okay?
Go right.
All right, um. All right, uh yeah, at the end, after we kind of figured out, you know, what this looks like, I was going to um uh be sure that uh the next time we meet uh that our CFO would have a chance to to at least speak a little bit to what that looks like beyond year one. And um that would be, again, helpful for the long term planning. I do think I mean, I can see, I can think of three other routes right now, you know, uh El Portel to Point, you know, C and D and E off the top of my head. So I do think this will be uh successful. I did have one other question, and that was about data, I believe. Um so in uh so within COVID, do you believe you have enough data from other municipalities uh that with our pilot program beginning during COVID that we would be able to uh accurately extrapolate, I guess would be the word? Uh where like our numbers are going to be skewed because of COVID, essentially is what we're already understanding. As you know, uh as it's affecting everything. So what kind of uh would you be able to speak to at all? What you guys look at in terms of that data to try and figure out, okay, you know, because it, because especially this being a pilot program. Uh the data is even more valuable, right? Uh because it's your only set. So um that was one of my other questions.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I mean, with regards to other municipalities, I mean, every little municipality is totally different in terms of how we operate, what their specific goals are. Um you know, most of the services that we provide are on demand, door to door services within the the municipality there, where it's not really taking you outside the municipality, but it's, you know, taking you to where you need to go within the municipality. Some of the fix, like we ran, uh you know, we were running an express route from North Bay Village to to Omni, that's currently on suspension. Um Palmetto Bay, um we were doing an on demand service within the village and then we were doing an express route right to the Metro Rail station. Right now, all four of those vehicles are doing on the. Right now, all four of those vehicles are doing on-demand within the village right now. So I don't have really numbers on the fixed route side of things, but I, I will tell you this, that in terms of ridership across the board, I mean, you know, at the peak of it, we were down to five, 10% of our typical ridership. Right now, we are back up to, I would say, around 60-ish percent, and climbing, I mean, we're, even though COVID's getting worse, I guess, I, I, people have to go to work, people have to move around, and people feel safe within our vehicles, because they're socially distanced, we're not packing people in, and within our smaller vehicles that I don't have shared on the screen here, we're only doing one group at a time, so we're seeing the increase in ridership, because they feel safe, they know that the vehicles are sanitized. But with regards to, you know, I guess, predictions on how, you know, El Portel would, would start and potentially start picking up, I mean, it, it's only time will tell, but I'll tell you this, at a, at a past experience, it picks up very fast, even, even during COVID. We, we launched, we launched South Miami today, we did a ribbon cutting today, and we had good ridership in day one. We launched FIU back in, back in August, September, that ridership has blown out the roof, it's been amazing. Florida City, that was a program that started back in, I think, July or July, actually, and, and that ridership's going up, so we're seeing the ridership start to come, start to come back to the normalization, and I, and I think in El Portel, you're going to see the same thing.
We definitely have to keep our eye out for that, then, you know, as, as we, you know, start this pilot, so we'll, we'll definitely monitor the, the COVID, the pandemic and just what's happening with that, and we're expected to start in January, early February for the program. So, let's just all, you know, just keep our, you know, keep our eyes out on that, and we'll, you know, check in with those who are participating as well, maybe do a survey, or just see how our riders are feeling, our residents are feeling about it once they experience it. Okay, do we have any other questions tonight? Okay, well, this has been a fantastic exchange, I hope we've answered lots of questions, and for those who are going to watch after, you know, when this is posted on our website, you know, again, feel free to reach out to me at the Village Hall, village manager at villageofelportel.org with any questions, and we'll keep you posted on, on the start date, we're, we're hopeful for early 2021. So it'll be a good year for El Portel and for all, for everybody, hopefully then. So if there are any parting words from anybody else?
You guys, I just want to say thank you for, for doing this, Madam Manager, thank you for putting this together, I appreciate you, you're always working hard doing things like this. Ms. Comaneras, Mrs. Spiegel, appreciate you, you always give your time and the hard work and hours you guys have put into, to make this become a reality, really appreciate it. And thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor, always on point, it's a pleasure to work alongside you, my brother.
You as well, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody also, and, and I expect we'll get a little bit of buzz already, because there will be people watching the YouTube channel and, and the video, so I'm sure it'll create at least an initial discussion here pretty quickly. This is, this is, I think, going to be great for El Portel, so thank you.
Great, thank you all, have a good evening, and we'll see you soon. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bye-bye.